Let's, uh, let's be, is staff ready? Do we have everybody present? Okay. Ken, you're all set. Roland, we're ready. Do we have audio in the back there?
Testing.
Testing.
Yep. All right. In that case... We'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the North Miami Planning Commission, Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ah, Mr. Eich. Let the record reflect that Kenny has just arrived. Yes, indeed. All right. Uh, we'll call the board members, please.
Commissioner Suckrey?
Present.
Charles Ernst?
Excused.
Gene Castor?
Present.
Kenny Eich?
Present.
Jason James?
Present.
Bill Prevattell?
Present.
Chairman, you have one?
Thank you very much. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No.
None? Okay. All right. Well, if that's the case, then we go to the amendment. We have to approve the minutes of last month. I hope you all read that tome. Cheryl, call for a motion on the minutes.
May I, uh...
Second.
May I make some adjustments to the corrections?
If you feel necessary, this is the time to do it.
Yes, if we could, please. And there are a few adjustments.
All right, play them out.
And, you know, I was, in particular, looking for my own name to get the corrections. Page seven of 11.
All right.
At the bottom quarter of the page, it says, "Commissioner Prevattell asked developer to clarify item number seven." I believe that was Commissioner James asked the developer to correct, to clarify item number seven. I don't remember calling a particular item at all. And then, at that same page, the lower right, "Commissioner James asked the question of the existing area the front enough to accommodate commercial development. Why rezone?" I believe that was me, Commissioner Prevattell, asked the question that the existing area. So I think those two are switched.
Okay.
In addition to the, let's see...
Let me catch up to these changes.
On page nine of 11, minor change, but, uh, third from bottom line, it says, "The next speaker was Hal Tonkin." I believe that's Mr. Howard, Howard Tonkin. And if we go to page 10 of 11, it, about the middle of the page, it reads, "Councilman Prevattell said that the area could have double-density zoning changes and more green space." Actually, it was sort of quite the opposite. I was pointing out that we originally passed something that was twice the amount and that I was, uh, kind of happy that it had been scaled down because even as lackluster, or as the phrase was, "lack of pizzazz," I was happy that it was scaled down. So it should read something like, "Councilman Prevattell said that the area was originally given double-density zoning changes and bonus units." And, uh, the overall project from the commissioner was that the renderings provided by the applicant misrepresented the true intent of the project. I'm not too sure if that was actually stated. I think there was a consensus that we wanted to see, again, using the word "pizzazz," we wanted to see something a little bit different. But I think it, the drawings were what they had intended to show. And then, finally, the sixth from bottom of that same paragraph, sixth line from the bottom, "And recommended to be covered." Commissioner Prevattell mentioned that the building should turn the corner. The building should turn the corner. In other words, it's a gesture to articulate the corner rather than use a mid-block approach to address a major intersection. And that concludes my changes, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, any references made to Councilman Prevattell ought to be also modified as Commissioner Prevattell, as opposed to Councilman.
Oh, did we make him a Councilman at some point in this?
And without an election, so that's quite some doing.
That's amazing. Mr. Prevattell, you are moving up in the world. Where is this? I need to highlight that.
Why, no!
I didn't happen to catch that, but, you know, your eyes tell you sometimes what you think is there. Well, ah, oh, I see. On, uh, page eight of 11, let me see here where the...
It should read grand poobah.
Congratulations.
Says Commissioner. Well, that's right, Commissioner, not Councilman, okay.
Well, page 10, midway.
Page 10, page 10. Well, let me get to 10. Let me see here.
Fourteen from the bottom.
Fourteenth from the bottom. Ah, "Councilman Prevattell said..." Yes, well, congratulations, Mr. Prevattell.
Change that to Walmart greeter? No, 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 we won't connect to that.
Proud of you.
We're all proud of you.
Yes, do you realize you'd... The last time a commission arose to such an aggressive level, I believe it was Frank Woland. But he went through the electoral process.
Who's now leading a normal life.
Yes, who's now leading a normal life.
This is good.
Oh, very good, very good. All right. Do we have any further amendments to this? If not, let me try to get these back in the right sequence here. Well, let's see. Now we've got this... Well, that goes there. Eleven, nine, seven... Five, three, one. Okay, all right, now we're ready. All right, now can we get, uh, a motion to approve the minutes as amended? All right.
Second.
Mr. Castor moves, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prevattell. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Secretary, here we are, sir. Thank you. All right. Do we have any communications? None? Okay. No, all right.
Well, uh, I, I had, actually, I had sent an email to the city council if they had any particular supplemental information on this and really received no, no response from them.
All right. Okay, try, try to lead into the mic when you... Is your mic on?
I had, I had emailed, I was looking for additional information on this. I had emailed the council, really did not hear back, get anything of, of, of content back from them. But I was just trying to find if they had additional insights on what we were discussing this evening.
Well, all right. Anything else? If not, then we'll move on to the public hearing. This is a public hearing, PC 3-15, "An Ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, Adopting a Small-Scale Land Use Plan Amendment to the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map For a 9.66-acre Portion of Apparent Track Totalling 13.66 Acres, Located at 1525 Northwest 135th Street, With Miami-Dade County Folio Number 06-2123-000-0050, To Go From Open Space Recreation To Mixed-Use Low-Density Land Use Designation In Order To Allow A Proposed Land Change To Be Consistent With The Intent Of The City Of North Miami Comprehensive Plan And Further Authorizing The City Manager To Do All Things Necessary To Effectuate The Subject's Small-Scale Land Use Plan Amendment As Required By Florida Law Providing For Conflicts, Providing For Severability, Providing For Codification, And For An Effective Date." Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. This application, uh, this request for land use change amendment was sponsored by Councilwoman, you know, Marie Sterle, was here present tonight. And then, this is for land use of a portion of the, of, because the Claude Pepper site has two major tracks. One where the actual park is and then the, the second one further west is where the Joel Celestine Center sits and it's right at the edge of it. And the intent is to, this site, the part of the site has been, uh, over time, has been used as a lake, as a landfill, you know, and then, you know, while the soil that was put there were approved by them, but over time, they were revealed to contain, you know, high level of, you know, you know, arsenic. So, and then, the city is trying to get this side designated as a brownfield to be able to remediate, you know, to mitigate the contamination on site. I mean, the perceived contamination, but actually, there's actual contamination. And then, uh, what the councilwoman request wants to do to, the site comprised 13.6, 66 acres, wants to cover a portion of it, which is on for 9.66, to do a small sale land use, to change the land use from open space recreation to mixed-use low-density. That would be more in conformity with the surrounding, you know, single-family low-density already present in the area. And, uh, we have reviewed the application based on, uh, the complaint and then the recommendation is to approve that, you know, because we have looked at all the criteria set forth in our complaint for, you know, LDR for rezoning. I mean, no, no, for land use change. And then, this application seems to have met those criteria and, and then there are some benefits that need to be derived from that in terms of, you know, cleaning of the site and then providing, you know, workforce housing, especially to the elderly in this area, part of town where there hasn't been no new development as far as, you know, a single-family or multifamily. And this, actually, it would provide a mixed-use development where, where I would elderly with a lot of other amenities that are provided on site to serve the needs as far as some small retail and medical offices to serve the needs of the resident population. And, uh, there are, of course, some conditions and then this is just one of, you know, three. I mean, we can say, you know, due diligence that are being done because this is one application. And then, the second one that you also hear tonight would be for the rezoning and also the waiver of plan that would actually cover that portion or out of the parent track. So, the staff has recommended that you, the planning commission, you know, recommend approval of this ordinance and then to be forwarded to the city council for ultimate, final consideration and subject to the condition that, of course, that is be planted. And there will be a conditional use also that will, that you, the planning commission, will also be able to see to, for whatever is proposed on that, on, on, on the piece of, on that portion. So you get another crack at it and then to provide even more recommendations. And then, there will also, after the conditional use permit is approved, that will go to the DRC approval. And those are the conditions that are listed in, in the report. So, basically, our recommendation is to, is to approve that small-scale land use of approval request.
Is there a developer wishing to speak to this issue?
I mean, no, I mean, it is sponsored by the councilwoman Sterle.
In this case, we'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is welcome to come forward.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Kevin Burns, 2065 Al Amanda Drive. I cannot believe that we're here tonight talking about taking public land, regardless of what the intention is for, taking park land, not just open-space recreation, park land that is part of Pepper Park, and turning it over to housing. This is the largest single vacant piece of land outside of Biscayne landings in the city of North Miami. And we happen to own it. What the city should be doing with this land is developing it for the park that is sorely needed for that community in that neighborhood. But how it even got on the agenda tonight, and as far as the staff recommendation, when one of the five bosses tells you that they want this on the agenda, how free and clear do you think their opinion is going to be to go against it? And no offense against the councilwoman because she wants to do something in her district. Folks, this is, this is backwards. No one single council person should be able to decide that they want to change the zoning on a piece of city-owned land. What should be happening, because I checked in every other city in Miami-Dade County, is this item becomes before the city council. They have a discussion among the five council members. And the council says, "Mr. Manager, take this to the planning commission. Take this to the Board of Adjustment. Make sure we have the public meetings. Make sure we have the public hearings on, on this item." And then you all start to talk about changing land use and the zoning and so forth. Not because one individual council person, regardless of who it be, if Scott Galvin came in and said, "I want to change the zoning in this building from mixed, from public use and I want to put Wachovia Bank in this building." We're going to go through all the nonsense and everything without getting permission from the city council to even discuss it. This is city-owned park land. You can build housing anywhere in this city. Yet you want, they want you to approve tonight without a developer, without a plan, without anything, change the underlying code for mixed use. Of course, it's going to meet the comp plan. It's very simple. We need housing. But we don't need housing here and this is the wrong process to do it. But folks, I don't trust the opinion of staff, the managers, or this whole process because it deals with elected officials telling staff people what to do and how to do it and when to do it. You should not even hear this tonight, any of the three items, before other council people, who are not very happy about this, have a chance to bring it up at a council meeting and then be welcome to bring it back and go through the process once the city council gives the manager directive. The city manager does not have the authority to ask for this and it is not in the discretion within a city council's purview to ask for this, regardless of what your legal team may or may not advise at this particular time. I don't believe, again, in closing, that you should even be hearing these items. It is inappropriate. It is public park land. And is this planning commission gonna, one who's gonna just say, "Oh, let's change it for low-density housing." It sounds nice, but you don't know what the, you don't know the first thing about this of what is planned. It is improper, I believe, procedure. Let's get direction from the city council as a whole and you may be back here in a couple of months to discuss this. But tonight, I think it's premature and I will fight to keep any public land that is an active, working park from being developed for housing. And again, we can do that anywhere in this community and nobody put out an RFP, nobody's done anything. This is not the way the procedure is supposed to happen. But don't, it doesn't surprise me being in North Miami at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Call in once. Yes, sir. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Al Siloski. I'm at 13930 Northwest 14th Avenue.
Uh, speak right into the microphone, sir.
Okay, can you hear that better?
Yes, sir.
I had a question because I was not clear on what this rezoning would mean. Is this strictly a rezoning for residential? Or would it include the ability to put commercial in there? Can someone answer that?
The way this is currently presented, if all three of these items were heard and approved and passed, it would be a residential unit.
Mix.
Well, yes, mixed use. That would allow some retail to be in there.
It would allow some retail?
Yeah.
Okay. We live right in the middle of this area and we would severely be opposed to any retail in the middle of a residential area when there's plenty of retail available to the east and to the west. And that's really the only point I wanted to make. I can't speak to the other gentleman's comments because I just don't know that much about it. But I would ask this board to seriously, to think seriously about allowing retail in this location. You're right next to a community center park where there are a lot of young people there and a 7-Eleven or that type of retail, which is what would happen, is not going to be conducive to the crowd that gets drawn to it. You don't believe that? Just look over on 7th Avenue or just look to the west. And I think you'll see what develops around these small retails. And this is not an appropriate place to put any retail. I've been there for forty-some-odd years. I've watched the whole area develop. I've watched parts of it decrease in value and in, in, uh, acceptability for residential area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Reginald Sims.
Yes, speak into the microphone.
My name is Reginald Sims. I live at 1420 Northwest 137th Street. Last thirty-five years. I'm representing the neighborhood there and we would like to see that area remain a park and/or nature preserve. We do not want any commercial development in our neighborhood. Okay? Those are sentiments of the neighbors.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission. My name is Carol Prager. I live in Arch Creek East. I'm a resident, I'm a civic activist and I just found out I'm also a gadfly. I too am objecting to the procedure that is being taken and bringing this item to the attention of the commission. My representative doesn't know anything about it and I hope he doesn't get upset with me, but he's not pleased. This is public land. This belongs to the people of North Miami, regardless of where they live. The parks over there are very important to that neighborhood. Giving it away for some other use makes no sense in today's world. When you go into any community across the country, they're looking for green space. They're looking for parks and recreation. The children over there need someplace to go. I, I suggest, if you do anything with, with the land, that you build a 21st-century park. Move the old Sasso pool and put in a Olympic-sized pool. Put a running track on it. Put some bleachers there. Light up a soccer field. Rent out the community center. Make it a revenue-generating section for that city. And, and in closing, I'll tell you this. If I lived there and I had children, I would not allow my kids to get on their bikes and cross Northwest 7th Avenue, North Miami Avenue, Northeast 6th Avenue to get to Cagney Park. Because that's really the only other park that those kids can go to when it gets built out.
You do understand that we're not talking Cagney here. We're talking Pepper Park.
I am telling you that I wouldn't allow my children to, to, to ride their bike from Claude Pepper to Cagney to get the services and, and the recreation that is going to be built on Cagney. We should duplicate Cagney over there. It will elevate property values for those people who will keep their children occupied. It would be a revenue-generating thing. I'm, giving away park land so somebody can build something on it and make money, a private entity to make money off my land? I don't think so. And I'll tell you something, a lot of people know about this item and they're very angry about it. So I suggest you kick this back to the council so that the council can take the heat on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening, everyone, volunteers. Thank you for working for the city. Annie Montgomery, 2082 Laurel Lane. I thoroughly agree with Carol Prager on the issue of giving away our land. I would like to see a Miami Shores Recreation Area there. What that would do for our children over in that neighborhood, we can also, children that don't live in North Miami can take advantage of that area, that pool, whatever, kickball, kick football, or whatever they call it, a field for that. Just lots of sports activity. And then, they have the Celestine Center that they could have parties, educational stuff. So, this is our land. This is our land. So, let's not give it to a developer or sell it to a developer to build housing and commercial property. This neighborhood needs, that neighborhood needs green space. They need parks. They need activity for their children and that's what this should stay with. So, gentlemen, I don't think you even have to vote on this tonight because I don't think it's in your preview. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Please be brief. Read into the microphone.
Good evening. Beverly Hilton, 12495 Northwest 6th Avenue, North Miami, 33166. At one point, um, I think I mentioned to some of the councils about building, um, affordable senior, homes for senior, retired, senior citizens. I'm not for giving the land to any private developers to benefit from us. This is city property and it should remain in the city and not to a developer. And we can't give, we don't have enough land as it is. We don't have enough parks as it is. And as, um, the lady Carol said earlier, we need more, we need the park, we need a pool. That's a perfect place for one. And that would benefit our neighbors because, of, of course, you know, the facility North Miami doesn't just service North Miami resident. It's serving the, it's servicing the adjacent. So I'm in favor of using this facility, this land, for city use, not, um, developer's use. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Second call, any speakers? Third call, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Well, shall I start from the left or the right? I'll, I'll start from the right this time. Kenny, I'll let you go first.
Mr. Chairman, should we just, at least, to, to address the concerns, at least ask our city council for an opinion?
Yes, I was on it.
Well...
And then we move forward.
Yes.
Do you wish to render an opinion on the appropriateness of this?
There's nothing in the code.
Nothing in the code?
And I go by the code.
All right, code is silent.
There's nothing in the code that prevents this board from hearing this item, as much as, you know, it, it, there are folks here that would like to see it kicked back to city council. This, there's a, I, your, your procedures are set forth in the LDRs and they're quite nicely laid out in the staff's report. And this is your guiding light, your, your, your path to making a decision this evening. And that's section 3-1105. It sets forth all the standards to be followed here in these proceedings. Nothing in the code prevents a, a particular member of council to sponsor an item. It's city-owned property.
All right.
Who, who else is going to sponsor the item?
All right, we understand.
On city-owned property, so...
I think in all fairness, I would agree with Prevattell.
And whatever happens tonight, it still has to go through two readings before city council.
It's not like we have a choice not to discuss this.
Right. We'll discuss it. Let's start from the right. Kenny?
Okay. I, I have several, several questions. First of all, we have, we still have a Parks Commission, do we not?
Is your mic on?
We still have a Parks Commission. Do we not?
Uh, yes, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay. And has the Parks Commission been briefed on this? Has this been brought before the Parks Commission? That's one question that I have. The second thing that I have is, okay, we are going to be looking this year, this is the seventh year of our land development rules and regulations. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to bring this issue Wouldn't it be more appropriate to bring this issue up during those LDRs instead of now? Which is going to be in the next couple of months. And let me, let me just go on here. I listened to, uh, what the citizens and the former mayor had to say and... Can you hear me? We had municipal support, which was going to be public land. We were going to have a great golf course out there and I remember we had signs up there saying, "Make it happen." Well, it didn't happen. Then we turned it over to private development. Okay. Now, is there a reason why we want to take a portion of this park and turn it over to private development? Is it fiscally advisable? And we say, "Well, this is public land. We shouldn't be giving it away." Well, let's, or we shouldn't put a business on it. You know, I can go any place in this county and I can see businesses that are there. I see concession stands in county parks. I see restaurants in the city of Miami. They have on, on, on their, on their land over there. So as, as far as, and, and the city in the past has given up, abandoned rights away, right of ways, uh, has developed or sold parts and parcels of our land to private developers. Which actually are not parkland, but various neighborhood parcels. We've done that. This is the first time that I've ever seen a piece of parkland being, saying, "Okay, let's, let's develop it." I would think this would be more appropriate to bring it up when we do the review of our LDRs. Secondly, one of the hews and the cries that I remember when I was chief of police throughout the county was we didn't have enough parkland. And we had that youth initiative back in nineteen ninety-eight where we spent an extra half cent to buy parks. Okay. Now, I, I can remember Claude Pepper Park when it came into the city and we had that big lake out there and we were filling it in with all kinds of debris and this and that and so forth and so on. Personally, what I would like to see happen out there is a beautiful, a, a, a beautiful park. Something like Central Park in New York with woods and trees and walking and space and all that other stuff. But I, I do have a question to ask of staff. A couple of blocks north, there's a piece of city land. We have it right here in the map. I believe it's the YMCA or whatever. I haven't seen this in years. If we want to develop, and I, I understand the need for affordable housing. And if we want to develop affordable housing, why don't we look at that parcel of land over there? Why do we want to take it out of the park? Now, is there an economic reason? Uh, my other, go ahead. I'll give the staff a chance for them.
There, there is, Kenny. Let me...
Okay. I, I'd like to know, you know, if there's a reason, let's, let's hear it.
Uh, two years ago, that parcel came before this board and the city council on rezoning. That land had been purchased by a private owner who subsequently had it replatted into seven home sites.
Okay. So that's, that's null and void.
Right. That's, that's no longer in our purview.
Thank you.
Although I agree with your sentiments, but
Okay.
nothing we can do about it.
I'm glad that, okay. That, that, that knocks that out of the box. Okay, so let's look at the, the parcel of land that we want to redevelop, that we want to sell or make into, uh, low housing density or mixed use. Is there an economic reason why the city cannot afford to hang on to this land and develop it into a park? I, I, I read the staff report. I read about the PCBs and the contamination. And if it's real, is it going to be too cost-effective for us to keep it? And, and instead of a private developer to develop this? Where is the balance with this? I, I, I'm, I'm like in a quandary here and I, I like to, you know, have some answers on it. Is there an economic viability to sell this to a private developer? Can we not, can we not get grants? Can we not remediate the land and make this into beautiful open space? Staff?
Well, I understand your position there, Kenny. We're, we're not going to get answers to that tonight, but I understand your comments.
That's one question I have.
All right.
And secondly, you know, I, I, I see, and I'm going to jump off of this park then for a minute. I, I had a vision on Northwest Seventh Avenue and I can remember patrolling it for years. That from one hundred nineteenth to one hundred and forty-third street off of I-95, I like to go sky's the limit over there. I think we would develop jobs. It, it, it's prime, it's prime for redevelopment. And why could we not, like when I drive downtown to go to the Veterans Administration, put affordable housing right there like I see, we're having a developer coming in right now with a, that beautiful piece of art, artwork is on that building. And, and why, why couldn't we put something there? Um, the other thing I, I was daydreaming about and I was thinking like Bob Moses did in New York City, the Triborough Bridge and Tunnel Authority Chairman and probably the most powerful man in America at his time, is I look at one hundred nineteenth street and I, and I daydream and I say, "Okay, we're going to have the, whether we like it or not, the Day County Highway Authority is going to move that Grattany Expressway through from Twenty-seventh Avenue to, uh, to I-95." We have a beautiful opportunity to use their money, just thinking outside the box. Make some green space of two or three blocks over there. Make that into a transportation hub. Rezone that. Have a beautiful green border between one hundred and nine, say, one hundred and nineteenth street and one hundred and twenty-first street. Just thinking differently. Thinking on a grander scale. And, and, you know, I, I'm in a quandary with this. You know, maybe the time for this thing to go is to the land when we review our LDRs and then make a decision at that point. That, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if we look at, I think we should take the whole city as a whole. What do we need for parkland? What do we need for affordable housing? Do we want to increase the density? Do we want to increase the height? Do we want to change certain areas to commercial from residential? The whole thing. That's why we're reviewing it in seven years. This, I think what we're doing right now in, in good faith is we're putting the cart before the horse. I honestly believe that. Thank you.
All right. Jane, you're next.
Okay. Um, I'd like to say that I am not against affordable housing. I am for affordable, affordable housing. However, I also understand Councilwoman wants to do something in her district. I see that, uh, there's lack of communication based on what I'm hearing. And there's not effective communication, especially, um, this item was not discussed, discussed with the, um, Park Commission. I, I believe there needs to be more effective communication before we, um, proceed to do anything with this park. I, I think the process ought to be a little bit more different. That's where I stand.
Thank you. All right. Uh, I'm in a quandary myself at this point. I have some feelings on this issue. Normally, the chair reserves comments until the other commissioners have spoken. But I will alter that personal policy tonight and state categorically that, as it stands now, I'm unalterably opposed to this. And I'm going to give you my laundry list of reasons as to why. One, this was not vetted before the Sun Kiss Grove Homeowners Association. Input from the residents was not sought on this on the West Side. I rather think that they would have interesting comments and a lot of input. They were ignored in the process. I am not in favor of taking parkland that was originally purchased through a substantial federal grant for redevelopment to develop a park of regional impact. And we've had no research on whether or not there were any strings tied to those federal dollars when we got the money to launch the Claude Pepper Park. And until I hear otherwise, we could be opening up an entirely different can of worms on that one. I am opposed to it because this has not been vetted before the Park Board. Now, I understand staff will go back and say, "We don't have to. It's not in the code. It's not a requirement." I respect that. But it is exceedingly nearsighted to propose such a major change to a substantial part of parkland and not first seek the input, input of the Park Board. Then, we have an absence of visioning in this city. Tragic absence of visioning. All right. So maybe this would be a good brownfield target for, for some consideration. But that's not to say we could not afford in future years when times are better to clean it up and do something very progressive for parks. The communities in America that are thriving doing so because their governments are investing in infrastructure and facilities. The idea to build an Olympic-sized swimming pool and a track out there sounds awfully good to me. What I see missing from this is the visioning process. We spend a lot of time and effort on downtown and got, in my personal opinion, very unimaginative results because by and large, that visioning process failed to look at downtown as a blank slate and left all facilities exactly where they were. And no thought of expanding, changing. What if we moved this building? What if we created some open space here? What if we did something else there? None of that took place. The city lacks, to be polite, imagination and dynamic leadership. You certainly don't get there by giving away a huge tract of land for parks and recreation. And then, one of these eight-hundred-pound gorillas that nobody's talking about yet is long-term annexation issues. That property sits on the border of Biscayne Gardens. Now, Biscayne Gardens has been trying to establish their own city for a dozen years at least. The economic analysis is not encouraging. It's doubtful that they have the economic viability to establish a city. And if Day County continues on the path of dropping out of the municipal services, then ultimately, Biscayne Gardens goes on the block for annexation. And if it does, there's only two viable cities that could compete for parts of Biscayne Gardens. North Miami and North Miami Beach. And given how the Biscayne Canal cuts through and carves out a whole section of Biscayne Gardens, that area becomes potentially viable for future annexation in the coming decade. Now, the interesting thing about Biscayne Gardens is Day County never provided appropriate land use for parks and recreation in that subdivision. There was no burden upon the developers to set aside acreage for open park space. Lots of homes, lots of people, no park space. So what happens a decade from now? If we wind up with an annexation of Biscayne Gardens and have failed to bank any land for future parks and rec? Are we then going to march north and condemn a bunch of houses and clear it out for a park? I don't think so. I'm disappointed that we didn't propose to landbank this if we couldn't do anything else with it. I understand the city's got tight financial issues. I don't have a problem with that. But that doesn't mean we can't clean it up down the road and make a really, really stellar, first-class, architecturally creative recreational use. I just don't see us moving in that direction and that's sad. Now, as to the other issues about putting the horse before the cart, do I think this should have come directly to us? I do not. I understand that there's nothing in the code that prevents it. But that's why we have homeowners associations. It's why we have a Park Board. Why we have all these other entities out there. This should have full public examination. None of these issues have been addressed. And so for all of the reasons I've stated, I will tell all of you here and now, I'm opposed to this. Having said that, Jason James, you're next to my left.
I don't have anything else to comment.
Mr. Privatel, this is your golden opportunity to sum up.
Well, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, 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 first I have to say, I, I am, I am so pleased, uh, to see the, the commission sort of coming together and getting, I think, on the right track after we've gone in, in various directions for many years and, uh, finally are really taking that stance to, uh, to make our city better. Commissioner Each, uh, I don't know, I, I guess I'm not a very good communicator because I have for years tried to convey that we need to have an overall vision for our city. And you don't still look at a myopic piece here and a piece here, a little piece there and, you know, uh, sort of beat that to death and, and have it not work in the whole, in the, the gestalt, in the totalitarian of the, um, of our city. Um, and, uh, Chairman Seifried, I, I'm so happy for you to mention downtown, uh, which has also been done, in, in my opinion, somewhat myopically, where we didn't get a broader vision, where we didn't, we're looking at things that could be done in a matter of months and be satisfied that rather than using this opportunity to plan out for years and what facilities and what parks we have, what the circulation pattern would be, how, things that really do need to improve over, you know, as we move through time and to address those rather than just really take the quick and easy route. And, uh, so this, this is very, very satisfying, uh, in that sense. I'm also very happy from those people who spoke that it seems like a number of them came, uh, based on the addresses that they came from the east side. And yet here it is, they're coming out to support something that's more of a west-side orientation and yet they see the importance of this and how it, how, what it means to our city and how it could improve our city. Uh, without being too redundant from what's been said already, I'd like to go over a little, few other considerations. And, um, one is that, and this was mentioned, but that park space is needed. Our comprehensive plan last time pointed out that we are, uh, certainly lacking in park space. Uh, for a number of years, we've done little if anything to enhance our park space. The opportunities that we've had in development to do something have been, uh, for the most part, squandered. It's, we have the one hundred and eighty-four acres at, at Biscayne Landing and, uh, I don't know if anybody has any interest in going to the, their park allocation there, which is, uh, out behind Target, uh, the loading docks on the low part of the site. Uh, the least desirable portion of that site, that's been earmarked for a park. That also is supposed to be where we shoehorn an academic facility. It doesn't work as a park. It doesn't work as an academic facility. It's, um, it, it's a missed opportunity like, like so many other things we've missed. Similarly, I, I've, I've got to ask where on the west side or where in our city plan, where is the large vision for where we would have an academic facility? If we keep on talking about we're going to grow the city, with that growth comes an additional population, comes additional children, additional students. Where would we have our next setting of schools? Do we have this many nine or thirteen-acre parcels lying around that we could say, "Yeah, we're going to put a school here. We're going to put a school there and there"? I don't think so. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have that many contiguous parcels that would lend themselves to, um, being an academic, uh, facility. Um, by academic, I mean that it would be just partly, uh, a built project, a building, but a lot of it would be playfields and, and other amenities that could possibly use for both, uh, the school functions as well as after-hours for the, the public functions and therefore meeting the needs that this park originally was, was set for. So I don't know, uh, you know, I, I think it's good to have this, uh, on reserve and available for, uh, that type of usage. And then I'd like to address something, uh, which really hasn't been addressed yet, uh, over many meetings, uh, in many forums. And that's the issue of housing. And, and I certainly am for, um, accommodating as many people as possible, having fair housing and having everybody having quality housing. But I find it very strange that for year after year, we keep pushing for housing that we need housing. And at the same time, we, we have many housing projects, you know, and there's a hundred units here and a hundred units there. And, you know, in Biscayne Landing, we will have, as it builds out, more than ten thousand new residents. More than ten thousand new residents. So on the boards right now, we have maybe twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand people on the projects that we've already reviewed in the last few years. At the same time, I can't recall, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, any more than a handful of projects that call for new commercial or new, uh, office activity. Where, where are the, where are these people going to go except for elsewhere for their jobs? They can't all work at Whole Foods or, uh, you know, at the Walmart should it ever be built. Uh, where are the quality jobs that we need to create for all these people that we're housing? We already have people showing up to the Biscayne Landing, uh, event saying they don't have jobs. But we're going to create more and more housing, invite more and more people in, stress our services further. And then we'll have another load of trying to, we'll have more people show up to meetings saying they want jobs. Where is the, where is the initiative for us to bring in, you know, corporations and businesses to actually have a, to produce something, whether it be manufacturing or a service industry? Uh, you know, not just more little shops, but we need something that is going to balance out our economy, I think. And that seems to be missing. I don't know, um, where is the commercial plan? And building a park and... And building a parking garage does not mean that all of a sudden people go, oh, that's great. Let's bring in our jobs, let's bring in our business, let's bring in a Fortune 500 company because, look, they've got a parking garage there downtown. That's not doing it. And it goes back to that vision, it goes back to that small thinking. What are we doing to ourselves that we have this compulsion to just keep spreading thin? And, and not creating our parks and not going a little bit higher? And, you know, we really, in, in my opinion, I think we need to have, consolidate a little bit, go a little bit more vertical, a little higher density. And at the same time, double and triple our park space that we have. Really increase our park space. Really look at our circulation patterns and improve on that. We have people that show up for, you know, the, because it was in their backyard, they show up for the Walmart meeting. And they were outraged about the traffic at my cause. I don't know if anybody thinks about this, but when we add more housing, those people are not gonna have to drive to, if it doesn't be, if it's not that Walmart, they'll drive to another or another, and more and more people are on the street. And as we keep on pushing ahead with, let's, let's develop, let's develop, at the same time, people are coming out saying, we don't want the traffic, we don't want the traffic. And there's no vision. And I think part of that vision is you need to have, the housing, if it is any, has to be hand-in-hand with new office space and commercial activity so people don't have to travel in very wide paths that they can live and work possibly in the same place. We have a lot of people, you know, we're talking about, you know, the ten thousand-plus people that'll be going into Biscayne Landing, barely an office space at all there. And, you know, they're basically going to have to get onto Biscayne Boulevard and travel throughout the community and go on Hundred Twenty Fifth Street. And it's going to become extremely congested for these people to go out and find jobs, find employment elsewhere. Because it's not happening here. And we're, we're leading ourselves down, I think, a very dangerous path. And to just continue this, I used the word before, this, this sprawl, this suburban sprawl is not in the benefit of our city. I'd like to see us retain our parks, enhance our parks, have more parks, and, and a better living environment for everyone. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prevotell. I, I think we, we fairly have a good sense of how the planning commission feels on this particular issue. Unless there's a point that has not been raised, the chair will call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to provide you with a suggestion for your consideration. If this board decides to deny the application.
Which is how it's looking.
Which is how it's looking. I would offer, I would suggest to you to deny it without prejudice. So that perhaps, if it does come back to you within a period of twelve months, you could still hear the item. It's just a consideration. Otherwise, the application, the same application would have to wait twelve months.
Which is, I think, fine, given the status of the LDRs. All right, the chair will call for a motion to deny with prejudice. All right, moved by Mr. Each. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Prevotell. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion is denied with prejudice.
I think Mr. Castor actually seconded it, for the record.
Mr. Castor, what did I say? Okay, well, all right. Now, the next two items technically are moot. However, are we required, or should we read them into the record and take a vote?
The, the second one is related to this item.
Yes, it's a rezoning issue, isn't it?
Yes. So, and it's also quasi-judicial. So, and of course, it's totally dependent on, on you passing the first item, so.
Which, of course, we didn't do.
It, it's similar to deja vu, the, the previous, yes.
All right, let's read it into the record and keep it simple. All right, this is item PC four dash fifteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations. By amending the City of North Miami Official Zoning Map Reference in Article One, Section One dash one oh six to reflect the rezoning of a nine-point-six-six acre portion of apparent tract totaling thirteen-point-six-six acres, generally located at fifteen-twenty-five Northwest One Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street with Miami-Dade County Folio Number zero-six dash two-one-two-three dash triple zero dash zero-zero-five-zero. From the current PU Public Use Zoning to PD Plan Development Zoning, consistent with the intent of the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan, providing for conflict severability for an effective date. Staff report, please.
This is on the second part of the application for the Claude Pepper Lakefield Site. And then, this is related to the first one, like Deputy City Attorney just mentioned. Because the rezoning of this piece is contingent upon, you know, the land use amendment that you, the commission just denied. So, again, staff recommendation was for the approval of the site as it meets, you know, the criteria set for in the LDR. And, and subject to certain conditions that, basically the same condition that was listed, that were listed in the report and for the complaint amendment and then for it. And the same condition that before you deals with, dealing with the planning of the law, the conditional use permit that they have to apply for. And subsequently, the DRC approval and, and basically, you know, stormwater management building permits that need to be issued within a year of this, of the approval of the conditional use permit. So, it's basically the same recommendation for approval.
All right, we understand. Staff report is done. Now, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. I want to make it clear to all members of the audience, you'll need to be sworn if you wish to say anything and.
Please stand and raise your right hand, Mr. Mayor.
Only those who are sworn will be allowed to speak.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this may come forward. We have your comments from the previous item. You may adopt those if you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Burns.
In the interest of brevity.
Yes, absolutely. Kevin Burns, twenty-sixty-five Allen Amanda Drive. I want to commend the planning commission for your first action, but you have these two other actions to take. You are doing what you're supposed to do. You're planning the future of this city, which seems to have gotten lost. There is no direction. And I want to just touch upon the contaminated, now, first time in fifty-six years of living in North Miami, that Pepper Park is now contaminated.
Yes.
I'd never heard it before. Prece, oh, you like that technical word, perceived? Let me tell you something, how that lake got filled in. The city started doing some work, and we wanted to fill it in and, and to make soccer fields and to make playfields and all kinds of stuff. And Mark Collins, the city, Public Works Director, because I was the mayor at the time, said, we don't have the money to afford it. I said, what do we do with the sidewalks and the fill and everything else that we, we were paying to dump somewhere else? So, him and Mr. Patterson hired somebody as the city was doing work. And they had somebody out there who certified every single load of dirt that went out there that we allowed to be filled in there. We had people pay us and people we allowed to dump there for free. But every single load had to be certified, where it came from, the whole process. We did that because we did not want to have another Munisport, Biscayne Landing's mess. And I definitely didn't want it to say, oh, Mayor Burns let them dump contaminated junk out there. It didn't happen. They dumped city sidewalks, Jimmy Hoffa's not buried out there, okay? And so, the, the, the fill that got dumped there, the four years that I was there, was clean. It was supervised. And it continued on under that, the leadership of Mark Collins, until he left. What happened since then? I'm sure no other park, no other Public Works Director would allow contaminated material to go out there on that site. So, allegedly, possibly could be, it's, it's, it's a smokescreen, folks, to make you think we have a problem out there. We don't. That land is very valuable. We, we have money now. We owe it to the residents to develop that as a park. We could have developed that land and put high-rise and everything else out there twenty years ago, ten years ago, five years ago. It's not what the, the neighborhood wanted. And Mr. Chairman, you are right. Claude Pepper and Mr., they called him Red, Joyce Mumford's husband, are the ones who got that lake, who got that property. And Claude Pepper fought to get that, to save it. And Mayor Steinberg, Stembridge, is the one who helped create that park. And it was to ever be a city park. And there's federal dollars in there, so maybe there's a thread somewhere where we can latch on to, so it can't be developed. And again, you all are correct in everything that you said. But we don't have enough parkland. And the cop plan, that, by the way, my administration rewrote because it hadn't been updated in twenty-five years. And you all remember the process of going through that rewriting of the plan? Number one thing it said, we did not have adequate parkland. Not adequate parkland. And Mr. Each, you're correct. We have sold off little blocks, vacated end alleys that were useless, that would make more sense in a commercial viable hands as part of additional property. Never, ever has this city, other than the fiasco at Biscayne Landing, given away, rezoned, city-owned parkland that is functioning as a park. Go there in the morning and see how many people are running around and jogging on that track. I'll tell you, there's two, three hundred people a day out there. And our baseball, our Little League baseball people, they come from all over that area. Those baseball fields, the softball, everything is used, used to the maximum. We need more space out there. So, you guys are on the right way. But I wanted to make sure, as unbrief as I was, is that, for the record, because I know how things work here in North Miami, that people voiced their opinion, their objection, not just to this, but to the next item. And I hope you all will continue to deny, deny this process. And I don't think anybody should have been given a bite at the apple for another year. Thank you.
Well, don't deprive the others to speak. Yes. Now, Carol, you know you must state your name and address, but please be brief. And you can adopt all your prior, prior comments if you wish.
As long as that's all I'm adopting. My name is Carol Prager, Arch Creek East. I do adopt my position from the first item, but I would like to add this, Mr. Chairman, if I can. I would like to know where the perceived notion that we had toxic soil over there, I would like to know where that information came from and where I can get that in your department this week? Could you supply me with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. And this planning commission, thank you very much for your comments this evening. So pleased to have people of vision sitting on this commission. I hope you help the city dream big, because we haven't dreamed big. And I don't know how long, maybe in the fifty-one years that I've been living here. But please, continue down that path and you'll get a lot of support from the community. Thank you.
Next. Now, sir, when you, when you speak, please talk directly into the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Al Slobuski. And my address is one-three-nine-three-oh Northwest Fourteenth Avenue. I want to make a couple of comments. First, I oppose the second part of this. I oppose the whole thing for the reasons I stated before, so I won't repeat them.
You're adopting your comments.
But I would like to thank you for the manner in which this group listened to the people that were opposing it, as well as to the proponents, and the way you acted on it. I was kind of skeptical, and I usually have been, that any of these boards are gonna listen much to the public. You have, and I think you're to be commended for it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next. Next speaker, we had several people sworn there. All right, now, Annie, of course, you can adopt all your prior comments. Just make them part of the record.
Annie Montgomery, twenty-eighty-two Laur Lane. I just wanted on the record that I oppose this change of zoning. And I appreciate everything you gentlemen are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. All right, next. Second call for next. Third call for next speaker. I hear no thundering herd, see no rising cloud of dust, and therefore, this public hearing is closed. All right, gentlemen, let's be brief.
Since I was last, can I touch on something?
Oh, yes, Bill, I'll let you go first this time.
There you go. Just get away. And, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not pointing at our, our current staff because this is something that's happened well prior to, to their arrival. But the material that we're given was, was essentially this sketch.
Photograph, an overview photograph.
It's a photograph. It's an aerial photograph. And this is the largest of, of those. The others are actually about a quarter the size. And on it is a, a red outline of the subject property. And I, I find it a little unsettling that, and I've said this before, that if someone wants to build a tiki hut, or to extend a balcony, or to do some other minor gesture in this city, that they go through rings of fire to get it done. And yet, you know, somewhere, our Community Planning Development will allow this to take public park space, to change the zoning, to a really major gesture, a very large portion of land. We're not talking about one or two feet, ten feet, twenty feet. We're talking about nine acres, whatever it is, forty-two thousand square feet times nine. We're talking about a lot of square footage. And basically, to go through this process, what was needed was to go to an aerial photograph and put a red line around the property, and that was sufficient. There's no access, no egress, no location for the parking. There's nothing even schematically shown, no sightlines, no housing lines, no street walls. There is zero, except for, that's the part. And there, we'd open up the floodgates to, who knows? You'll get to look at this later on, until, again, it comes down to us and it's too late and it's done. And, oh, what a surprise.
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we discuss that just after, after the meeting? I, I mean, not after the meeting, I, I wanted to ask staff.
We can do a lot of things, but at the moment, we're in recess. I have to go do something.
It's time for sock puppet theater now. You bring your sock puppets? Sort of the attitude, it's, it's not just the, the presentation, but the attitude that we can make major gestures in the city based on seemingly little information that then comes back to haunt us. And we, it happens again and again and again.
I, I understand.
Okay.
Jason?
I'm okay.
All right. Gene?
No comment.
Kenny? All right, I, I'm needless to say, opposed to this. I, I would favor a motion to deny with prejudice.
Motion to deny.
With prejudice?
With prejudice.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that item is denied with prejudice. Last item. PC five-five dash fifteen. A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, approving a waiver of Platteville-Claude Pepper Lakefield Site located at fifteen-twenty-five Northwest One Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street with Miami-Dade County Folio Number zero-six dash two-one-two-three triple zero dash zero-zero-five-zero. In accordance with Section three dash eight oh two of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations and Chapter twenty-eight of the Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinances, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. Staff report, please.
This is a, for waiver of Platteville, this is, item is related to the two previous items that were denied by this commission. And then, it's for, to cover that site that is proposed to be, for the land use designation change and also the rezoning. And, and the recommendation was for approval, but this is just a, a seminal process where the city has to approve it. This is had to go further to the county for final approval. But, you know, staff, I mean, commission, the commission is review on it and then can forward their recommendation to the, the city council.
All right, very good. Public hearing, this item is now opened. Anyone wishing to speak to this is invited to come forward. Please bear in mind, we've already denied the first two. This is rather a moot point, but we're going through this, this exercise for the record.
Kevin Burns, twenty-sixty-five Allen Amanda Drive. You guys are rocking tonight. For the record, that members of the public are here, and myself, to oppose this. And again, the audacity of the city to bring it through this process. And I heard something at church this weekend that was very meaningful. And the preacher was talking about a whole lot of stuff and said, something may be lawful, but is it beneficial? Is, just because something's lawful and you have the right to do something. Just because something's lawful and you have the right to do something by a particular procedure doesn't make it beneficial to the residents and to the community. And so when somebody says, "Well, we're allowed to do it," but I assure you, when we rewrote those codes, we never put in there, and maybe it's part of my fault, never put in there that a single councilperson or the mayor would try to dictate which pieces of property, on their own, could get rezoned and not rezoned. We would do it as a council and move it forward as a council. And so, again, thank you for your listening to the residents. And, Mr. Chairman, adopt all my previous long-winded comments, but into the record as being opposed to this item also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Carol Prager, Arch Creek East. I am opposed to item number three, as I was on one and two. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this? I don't think it's going to take many nails to close this coffin.
Ditto, ditto, ditto. I too am opposed to it. And while I live outside of North Miami, I've been involved in North Miami for many years. I organized and opened the Second National Bank years ago and served as president and chairman of that bank, along with ten others in Florida. So I am familiar with a lot of these procedures. But at eighty-one years old, it's refreshing to see one like this, where you gentlemen seem to vote your opinions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, Annie. Okay, Annie. Keep it short. You may adopt all your previous comments and incorporate them into this.
So done. Thank you.
State your name for the record.
Again, have a good evening. Thank you.
Name and address, Annie. Got to do that.
Annie Montgomery, 2082, Laurel Lane. I forgot.
Laurel Lane.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Second call? Third call? Hearing no thundering herd, seeing no rising cloud of dust, I shall close the public hearing. All right, now, gentlemen, let's try and keep this short and to the point. I'll start to my right, Kenny? On this item?
Make a motion that we turn this item down.
Is that going to be with or without prejudice?
With prejudice.
All right, Kenny moves to deny with prejudice. Do we have a second? Let's have, all right, seconded by Gene. Do we have any discussion on this? None? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
That's over with. This puppy is dead. All right, now, there's a few announcements to make here.
Until it passes in council.
Yep, this goes wherever it goes, but we have rendered our opinion in no uncertain terms. And, sir, where does this go now?
Yes, sir, it'll go to City Council, as you have voted on these items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I bring up something with regards to what Commissioner Prebetel was talking about before? I did have a discussion with our director of planning last week or last meeting. And what we're looking at, we're the Planning Commission, then we approve a concept. That concept then goes to the city staff, which is composed of several, several members. And that's called the Development Review Committee. Now, they look at it and they give the seal of approval. Now, what we should be looking at is having a design review board, okay? And bringing that back to the design review board to make sure that the architecture is pleasant. That's what they have on the beach, I believe, and other cities, City of Miami, so forth and so on. And I look at the architecture down there and I, or the beach, and I see such beautiful things. And I think the frustration that we all feel here as a city, as the people that reside, shop, travel, what have you, is that what we're doing is we're just getting these cookie cutter, mundane, drab, nonsense buildings put up there. Like Walmart came in here last week and, "We're going to throw it out there." Or a developer comes in and wants to put up affordable housing. Why can't it be classy, affordable housing? Yes, I know there's a price point and all this other stuff, but I think we're all tired of that. And I would like staff to possibly, the next meeting we have, if we can, get some input on the design review board. I think that would be really essential. And I don't know if this is in the charter now or not. I understood it was, but I don't think it is.
Yeah, I don't believe that it's a board that is functioning.
That's right. The problem with it at the time, years back, we didn't have any architects in the city to serve on it.
You don't have to have everybody being an architect on that board.
That's true.
Yeah, as long as you have a good eye, I think.
Yeah.
And that's the frustration that Commissioner Prebetel is always alluding to, is the fact that you're, what you're reviewing is a master conceptual plan.
Concept, a concept.
But yet, the frustrations stem from a more detailed analysis, which are not part of that conceptual plan, but they are part of the precise plan that goes to the DRC and not to you.
It goes to, right.
Those kinds of plans then would ordinarily be shifted to the review board for input and commentary.
One of the things that was brought up at the council meeting, I believe, when we were talking about the building going on Northeast Sixth Avenue and 135th Street, one of the citizens brought up. He said, he works at Sunny Isles, but he lives here in the city of North Miami. He said, "I see no pizzazz. I see no finished product. When you bring this product up to Sunny Isles, you see, not a total concept, but you see more than what we see." Like when we looked at that building on Northeast Sixth Avenue and 135th Street, it was mundane. It was nothing there. It was just five stories of, "Here it is, take it or leave it."
It was a sleeper, but...
It was, you know, it was nothing. And now, when you go to Sunny Isles, like Miami Beach, you see more detail. You see the questions that Commissioner Prebetel is asking. And we're not trying to be obstructionist. We're not trying to be bureaucrats. We want to change the direction in which we've been going for the last twenty-five years, to have a nice city with quality. I go to the beach and I can see a Publix over there that looks great. I look at a parking garage over there, it's fantastic. I don't want to see crap over here. And that's what it boils down to. So possibly, you could review that.
The issue is, what do we have to do to goose up the Architectural Review Board? What can we do? Can we make a resolution of some kind?
You can speak with the administration to try to revive the board back on, to bring it back, back to life. It did exist, I believe, here once, I'm not sure, but it's no longer really in the books.
Well, the chair would entertain a motion that the city staff make a concerted effort to revise the Architectural Review Board. I don't think that's inappropriate. If anybody cares to make such a motion.
I make that motion.
Does anybody care to second that motion? Do we have any discussion on the motion?
It's a minor discussion. It would be nice to have that type of board. I don't think it's detrimental. But again, those aren't projects that are sort of already in a development stage. It doesn't go back to the earliest stage, to this urban design stage that is so critical. When we talk about some of the great cities around the world, you have individuals that took a very strong hand, such as in Paris, that's really due, that Baroque plan is due to Baron von Hausmann having sort of the sole authority to implement a plan. Washington, DC is L'Enfant, who laid out this master plan, and it's still building out, still supplementing and supporting it. I mean, I've been as far as Islamabad, and I've been to Chandigarh in India, cities that are laid out in such a scale that they're, to this day, fifty, sixty, seventy years later, are still, you know, fulfilling that vision. And, you know, when you mentioned Robert Moses in New York, though he was not particularly a designer, it was sort of single-handedly controlling everything so that this army of designers and others, to be able to do the highways, the parks, the housing and such, to do some sort of cohesive effort to get end results, was very good. So to have a strong hand early on, such as an urban design component that's throughout the city and has a continuity for our city, to take a vision and continue it and improve it all the way as things are initially introduced, I think would be very helpful. And then as these projects are, get through that point, and then now there's going to be a building or a park or a structure of some sort at this location, then that gets reviewed to go over the nuts and bolts of it. But we need to go to the earliest stages to get the biggest bang for the buck.
I appreciate that. Now...
Sorry, Chair, I'd like to add that we do not just put a body in that committee. We put, you know, individuals who are going to have great inputs and who are going to be effective.
Well, we could all volunteer for that board. That would be exciting. I'll stop short of that, though, for the moment. And we have a motion and a second. Are we going to vote in favor of it, Mr. Prebetel?
I'll vote in favor.
All right.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now, there's a lot that couldn't be done for visioning. We're not beating up on staff because you did what you were told to do. But it was terribly nearsighted for this to have been gone forward. This was really putting the cart a mile out in front of the horse. Now, having said that, it's okay. We've told you what we think, and what our illustrious City Council will do, God only knows. But, you know, we wish them great vision. I don't think they have it, but we wish them great vision. So let's wrap this up. Gentlemen, I have two announcements to make. First, Michael McDeermay has been appointed as an alternate to the Planning Commission. He was unable to attend tonight in place of Mr. Ernst because he just hadn't gotten the Planning Commission worked into his monthly calendar yet. But he has been appointed, and I have asked staff to make certain that each month, a packet is delivered to him, along with the other commissioners, so that if we need him to get up here, he will have had the benefit of the packet and will be reasonably well-versed on whatever's coming before us. Now, second announcement, Tuesday, the tenth, which is just next week, Johnson and Wales University hosts their annual Taste of JWU. It is a fundraiser for the university and for whatever charity they designate. The last couple of years, they've been, they've been working with the Make-A-Wish Foundation. I don't know who they're working with this year, whether the same or different. The hours are roughly five to eight or five to seven-thirty. And I would hope that all of you would take your time to go there, Tuesday, right after work, and lend your support and write a check, be it to the university or to the charity. And no, I don't expect you to go broke. I think any nominal fee, you know, twenty bucks, twenty-five bucks, something. Just get something in there to help move that along. All right? And last item, just for the record, and this is an aside, Ken, you don't need to put this into the minutes, this last item. But I have the illustrious honor of hosting, once again, the Twenty-seventh Annual Knights of Columbus Run for Life First Night Welcome Dinner, which will be in my backyard. And unfortunately, it happens to be on Valentine's Day. The Run Team always kicks off their run on the Saturday before Ash Wednesday, which this year is going to be the fourteenth of February. Tickets are thirty-five dollars a head. We have thirty tickets to sell. And our chef for this event is Jerry Dominique from KC Healthy Foods. And program starts seven o'clock with an open bar, self-service. Couldn't afford to get a bartender for this one. And then there will be table service beginning at seven-thirty. And the Run Team hopes to be out the door by nine-thirty and back to their hotel. So if any of you feel so inclined, certainly, your support would greatly be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, before, something that's pertaining to the Planning Commission.
Do we have to go back to business again?
Just for, I'm sorry, I forgot all about this. I received a notice from the county Department of Public Works. They're going to have a preview of what they want to do to Northeast Sixteenth Avenue between 123rd Street and 135th Street. They want to widen it to four lanes, I believe, with two lanes each way. I believe it's going to be on the eleventh of this month at William Jennings Bryan. I think it's commencing at six-thirty. Annie, I'll be there. I mean, I live in a neighborhood, so I'm definitely going to be there.
That's going to be a hot item.
And this is something that we've been fighting for, for years. It went before the MPO and blah, blah, blah. Anyway, we did get some improvements done, but I think it's going to be a whole revitalization of that area and that street, which is good.
And may I bring up one more item that Commissioner Each touched on earlier? And that is the Comprehensive Plan. If you recall, it was about one year ago, whatever, maybe ten months ago, that we were discussing getting some heads-up information on that, that they were going to possibly pass it to us, that we could review it during the summer. And then, well, we'll, after the summer, we'll do it during the fall. And then we'll get it by December. And now here it is, February, almost a year later, and nothing has come about.
Yes, what is the status on the public hearings for the Land Development Regulations? It's time to do that.
Yeah, actually, the letter was sent to the state, you know, when Miss Pandilla was here, and because to notify them that the city is actually going to update the Comprehensive Plan. There's a meeting scheduled for this month, where, on the twenty-sixth of this month. And we're going to send the invite to you, because it's a public meeting, just a kickoff meeting, so the public can come and then, you know, gather their input at this point. Because the consulting firm that was retained was the same one that did the last one, which is Immigrant Planning Group. And then, but there will be a meeting, and then, as to Brittany, I don't know if Brittany already sent out, you know, the notices. The meeting is for this month, actually, on the twenty-sixth. There will be a public meeting, yes.
All right, thank you very much on that. Do we have anything else?
I'd like the Planning Commission to be notified formally to have us attend.
Mail us a flyer or something.
Yeah, there's a flyer that has been approved as of yesterday, because we are trying to work on the data. Because within the consultant, there was some conflict. So now we have settled on that, so the flyers is ready to be pointed out, and then you guys will be formally notified.
And I request that the same way we're contacted prior to these meetings, to get confirmation if that same thoroughness could be implemented for that meeting. Be great to have everybody on board.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Our next Planning Commission meeting will be on March...
On the thirtieth again.
March third. Three, three fifteen.
Three, three fifteen.
March third.
March third.
Yes.
All right, Tuesday, March third. Please mark your calendar. Everybody in town? Hearing no other business, commission is adjourned. Thank you.